January 24, 2013, meeting of the Planning Commission. And start with the roll call, Mr. Rodriguez.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Pujo.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Chair Jordan.
Present. And, Mr. Cato, anything in those categories of preliminary matters that would come up for today's meeting?
Nothing for today.
Okay, and I'll also note, for the record, too, there's nobody in the audience, so there will be no public comment for items not on the agenda. And then move right on to the purpose of today's meeting, the Planning Commission training, which staff will lead. Before you take that over, I just, I see today's session as a pretty casual type of work session, so don't any of my peers feel like you really gotta worry too much about talking and asking questions or making eye contact. I'm happy with that, and the whole "thank you, Mr. Chair" thing can kinda go by the wayside. I really, I really just think this should be a conversation back and forth, so kind of around the table, which is where I'd rather than here also. So, Mr. Cato.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, so like I said, in a lunch meeting back in December, this is super informal, you know, it's not like last year's training where we spent, I spent, well, we spent quite a bit of time preparing for something. This is more like an expanded lunch session where, you know, I've, I took the subjects that I found from all my notes about what, what the Planning Commission wanna talk about. We've done, I would say, minimal to maybe a little bit more than minimal research on some of these issues, especially the most, the more esoteric ones. So, the, the way that I thought this would go is, we'll kind of talk a little bit, interject anytime you want with questions, and, and then we'll get as far as we get with the knowledge that we have cumulatively among us, and then we'll, if there's further, more in-depth or whatever that you wanna know about, we'll try to go do some more research about it. And then, you know, we can, we can have these ongoing, you know, we have enough free time in our, in our, in our agendas that we can either put it on the end of a, a short agenda, or if we're gonna cancel one, we can do it, you know. It's, I think two hours would be plenty of time, so I'm thinking that we will end by three. If, if something's like totally engrossing at that time, we, we could obviously go longer, you know, from a time standpoint, we're okay with that. But I figured two hours would be plenty of, of time to, to go over the issues, you know, that, that we have for today. Any questions about what I think that we should be doing? Does that jive pretty much with what you guys are expecting? Well, I guess it doesn't matter, 'cause that's what we're doing.
Well, actually, I thought this was quite an ambitious list for two-plus hours.
Well, you know, we might not get to it all, so like I said, whatever, if we don't get to it, we can, we can do another one, you know, and, and keep going. Okay, so the first-
Danny, will you be the designated notekeeper on that type of thing that's better than just the minutes?
Yeah.
So I mean, if somebody has a point to make over, okay, I understand, here's what we like to see, talk about at a future date, they can look right at you and make sure-
Allison and me will, we'll both do our best to take notes on what, what we wanna follow up on.
Okay.
And then, then maybe at the end, in fact, I will do this at the end, because it's, that way we'll make sure we have everything, we'll just kinda go over, okay, here's what we wrote down about what else we wanna hear about, and, and then we'll just confirm.
Perfect.
Okay, great. So, the list that we're gonna talk about starts with the pedestrian master plan. The reason I did it that way is 'cause Steve Foley can be here, and then he doesn't have to be here for the rest of it if he doesn't want to. So, Steve Foley, from Transportation, will start us off.
Thanks, Danny. It's the end of January, but Happy New Year, everyone. I think this is the first time I've been back to the Planning Commission. We are talking about, first of all, just an overview of the pedestrian master plan, what's entailed in that, and how it gets incorporated into projects that come before your commission. First, I wanna give a, kind of an overreaching look at where, kind of where it sits, the pedestrian master plan, in the documents and city polit, of city policies. First of all, you have the, the umbrella of the general plan and the coastal plan, and you have elements that are part of that general plan, and the circulation element is one of those elements. I don't recall how many required these days now, is it seven still? Seven. Seven, and so the circulation is one of those, and then from the circulation element, we have developed a pedestrian master plan and a bicycle master plan. So, first of all, where is the authority that we have to ask for improvements within the public right-of-way? And the first is section, the code section 2244, which is the Environmental Policy and Construction section of the city code, and in there, we basically have the ability to ask for street dedication improvements for, that are required in all zones except for the single-family and, and duplex zones. There are exceptions to that, to those requirements. One is in the commercial areas, if you have an addition that is less than 25 in the existing side of the, size of the building, also residential additions that do not create additional units or guest rooms. Also, Subdivision MAP Act gives us the authority to ask for exactions, and so for subdivisions, both residential, commercial, through the Subdivision MAP Act, and then lot-line adjustments were limited as long to what we can ask for, but as long as they are in conformance to, as what we're asking for is in conformance to the general plan, which includes the pedestrian master plan, specific plans, coastal plans, zoning and building ordinances. So, some of the key circulation element policies, I'll go through both the circulation element and the pedestrian master plan, that point towards improvements for the pub, pedestrian improvements. First, we have the create an integrated pedestrian system that promotes safe and convenient pedestrian travel throughout the city. The city shall create an integrated pedestrian system within and between city neighborhoods, schools, recreational areas, commercial areas, and places of interest. Encourage newly proposed developments to include pedestrian connections to surrounding areas, adjacent transit facilities, or other travel facilities during development review.
May I ask?
Come in.
Do, do we have a definition for integrated? Or a kind of a working definition for integrated-
Integrated pedestrian system.
That we use as a guideline when we're looking at projects and-
I, I would imagine that the, there is not a definition of integrated in the circulation element. We do have in the back-
There is not, Steve, you're saying?
In the back of the packet that I sent you on the, on the pedestrian master plan, there are some definitions specific to the pedestrian master plan, but I am quite sure that integrated is not one of those.
I don't see, okay, just curious how we're, kind of using it as, what framework we're using when we look at integrated, and defining whether something's integrated or not, and how to work towards achieving greater integration and that sort of thing. Okay, thanks.
That?
Yeah, integrated, I would imagine, is that there's connections between points, correct?
You don't have gaps, yeah, basically, just kind of the opposite, okay, thanks.
The city shall create and foster a pedestrian-friendly environment through physical and cultural improvements and amenities. Improve sidewalk conditions to increase ease of use for all pedestrians, including those with strollers, wheelchairs, carts, walkers, and other walking assistance devices, the ability that people of all abilities have the ability to use that system. Create incentives and opportunities for private property owners to make incremental improvements to enhance the pedestrian environment surrounding their properties, such as widening sidewalks, planting street trees. Any improvement should comply with the relevant design guidelines and standards, and we will get into those standards momentarily. And lastly, include sidewalks, landscaping, and other facilities in new public and private construction to promote pedestrian activity where appropriate and consistent with policies contained in this element.
Steve, 5.5 says physical and cultural improvements and amenities. Not sure what's meant by, by the word "cultural" there. It's in 5.5.
Yeah, there was one before that, oh. Bottom of the page.
It's back a few slides. At the bottom there. Physical and cultural.
I'm gonna gander, well, the physical's easy, the cultural improvements, it might be having to do something with maybe some more of the improvements maybe we saw down along the beachfront edge, where we're getting a lot more, maybe artistic portions in there that tie in.
Incorporating art, that sort of thing.
Question about sidewalk improvements. Yes, so yesterday I attended the Park and Rec Commission meeting, and there were a number of requested tree removals on their agenda. Street tree, and then setback tree, but for street tree, it was interesting to me that a tree that a proper, that, that is in the street area, is in public right-of-way, I guess it'd be considered, but that is considered a nuisance to the property owner, such that the tree is hanging over, and also now going through the, the electrical lines. The commission, and I can't remember who from staff referenced, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, just getting to know their, their staff, unless the wires are high-voltage wires, the trees in and of themselves are not considered to be problematic from a tree permutation through wires. But we have so many trees, we're Tree City USA, I guess that's what we call ourselves, and, you know, with some of these roots that are now pushing up the sidewalk areas, there's some very difficult areas of sidewalk, of pedestrian walkway in our city, and I'm wondering, with this type of policy that we have, and yet we're not removing trees that may be an impediment to pedestrian safety, how, how are we looking to reconcile that?
When you are, when you get a project in front of you, it, it, many times depends on the project. A lot of times you'll have a project where they're going through, and it is going to, it's not a vacant lot, but it's going to become a vacant lot, 'cause they're gonna tear something down, they're gonna be doing improvements all the way through. One of the things they'll be looking at is the, the, the street trees themselves. Typically, what happens is, when somebody's doing a project like that, and there is uplifted sidewalk, one of the conditions that you're gonna see in the condition section is that they are to remove and replace those sidewalk sections to bring them up to conformance. There will probably be working with the, the city arborists with root trees, or if necessary, removing the tree, putting in root barriers, those types of things, so that the sidewalk can be replaced and fixed.
But where there's no project, and I remember there was an issue, a Milpus business owner brought to the city, was it just last year? The last one or two years, a concern about a street tree on Milpus in front of his or her business site that was causing certain problems. It could've been the canopy, it was also pushing up the sidewalk. Is that the city's responsibility to deal with the roots, to make sure that the public sidewalk is safe under our master, under our pedestrian plan?
Not necessarily the pedestrian master plan, but probably, and this is getting a little outside my area, but I'm guessing that you're gonna have risk management being, talking, talking to people, and if you get complaints, they're gonna wanna make sure that if there's a safety issue, those things are addressed.
Separate from like canopy fallout, which is just sort of a mess, you know, a maintenance issue to deal with. Okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
So is the repair of uplifted sidewalks, is that the property owner's responsibility when it's in the right-of-way, or is that the city then?
It is the responsibility of the property owner. If it's associated with a development plan that we are reviewing, and that they are then conditioned to, to fix that. Typically, what you'll see, many times, you may not just have the uplift, if you have an uplift, and it's a, it's something that's on a list, and a, the city recognizes this as an issue that needs to be dealt with, the city probably is going to get to it prior to it getting to the point where the Planning Commission is looking at it. It is, it is possible. Usually what happens is, is that there's going to be looked, it's gonna be looked at by Transportation and the Engineering Division when a project comes in, and making recommendations for a condition that those sidewalks be repaired.
But existing public improvements don't fall upon the property owner?
Correct. Those would be the responsibility of the city.
And the, the, the first page where you referenced the municipal, that's where that authority comes from, right?
For new, new, for new projects, yes.
And is, is that true also for purely ministerial projects that are being done without, say, Planning Commission or other, I guess pretty much everything else falls into somebody else's ballywreck, but, but-
There are, yeah, in that section-
That cross that threshold, as you talked about-
Right.
Then the city basically has the authority to request that those repairs be made.
Where we can, yes.
Right, okay.
And there are exceptions, and, for instance, a single-family residence. If somebody's building a single-family residence, we're not saying, oh, you need to go replace your, your sidewalk.
Okay, June?
Thank you. Mr. Foley, a couple of follow-on questions, two other commissioners' questions. One is, when it comes to the single-family dwelling and duplex exemption, you're referring to a single-family home on a lot of record that doesn't require any special variances or other discretionary permits, or?
Correct, yes, so if it was a, well, let's see, if it's even, I believe, that, that section says that if it's a single-family residence, and it would be a, obviously, a lot of record, so a, a valid legal lot, if it was created as part of a subdivision that this commission is reviewing, then they would be required to provide those improvements.
But not necessarily the case if it also required a variance, then you still wouldn't require the street trees, even if there were some other type of-
For instance, in the coastal zone, this commission sees coastal development permits. Somebody's doing an addition in the coastal zone, appeals jurisdiction, that is a discretionary case, but we would not be asking for sidewalk improvements.
Okay, thank you. And then another follow-up question, back to the street improvements, the right-of-way improvements that are the responsibility of a property owner, I think you mentioned that if it's a condition on some sort of permit that they had granted, then it would be their responsibility for the maintenance, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, they would be responsible for installing that, but once it's installed, it's part of the public realm, and that maintenance will be handled by the city street crews.
Okay, thank you.
Just, because you're gonna have an upcoming case which is sort of like this, it's a, it's actually a lot-line adjustment, and we are asking for the, for the public sidewalk on Edgewater, so, so when it's a lot-line adjustment, then it's a little, it's different, right? It's not just a one-single-family house, there's, there's more going on, and in order to be, to be consistent with the general plan, that, then, then we ask for, we can ask for things like that. So, you know, it's, it's different if it's an existing lot versus you're doing, you're doing something, either through a subdivision or a lot-line adjustment.
All right, so moving on to the key pedestrian master plan policies I pulled out, we have the city shall expand the sidewalk network to increase walking for transportation and recreation. The city shall incorporate the pedestrian master plan into the land development process, and use the pedestrian design guideline in the project approval process. So I've handed out the, very, this is a, a section, this is chapter eight, with the design guidelines of the pedestrian master plan. The pedestrian master plan is a 300-page document, actually larger than the circulation element. This has, so we have some excerpts in there. This is pretty much the guts that we, we turn to when we're reviewing projects, to see what's on the ground and how it matches, or does not match, the pedestrian master plan. Just throw this up there, this is, this is all online, some people we have heard have downloaded it to their iPads. You can have the entire pedestrian master plan, it's broken up into chapters, chapter eight is the chapter which has the, the design guidelines. So if, I'm just throwing this up here, the pedestrian design guideline has a lot of information, but if you turn to that section on page 218, has different configurations for different areas of the city, different sidewalks, and just wanna kinda walk through this a little We have four zones that we usually, that we talk about, lots of times we change it because it's, it's, some people don't understand what the different zones are, but I'll just walk through them. You have the curb zone, which is where the curb is. Commercial zones, usually a little wider than residential zones, some are, they're usually around six, six inches wide. Furnishing zone, four foot wide, that is the area where you have your street trees, your news racks, benches, bike racks, all the equipment that you usually see out by the curb. Then we have the through pedestrian zone. That pedestrian zone is what a lot of people consider as a sidewalk. In commercials areas, you may have the furnishing zone that's also hardscaped, but it may have landscaping, and it also, in the residential areas, or lower volume areas, you also see those areas that having a parkway in the furnishing zone. But the through pedestrian zone, that's your clear area, that's the area where your pedestrians are walking, have the ability to walk next to each other and pass other pedestrians easily. Then lastly, we have the frontage zone, and this is your, kind of your shy distance, this is your distance that you, a person will shy away from when they're walking down the street. If you have the building right up against that area, you have a tendency to not walk right next to the building, so you shy away from it. So this, depending on the widths of the streets and how, how high volume of pedestrians you have, that, that frontage zone will change. That also, that frontage zone can be on private property. We've seen that before, where we'll have allowed the building to be set back, the frontage zone is all on private property, and there'll be an easement that's been dedicated to the city for, for that portion. Yes?
Excuse, oh, yeah, thanks. For commercial enterprises, restaurants in particular, I'm thinking of, that have tables and chairs out front, does that have to fall within the frontage zone, so it doesn't impinge on the pedestrian zone? Yes?
Yes.
Is that the simple answer, yes?
Yes, yes, that area, when, all those, like on State Street, all those areas that come in, they're asking for that area to be leased, basically, from the city, so that they can put their tables out for their businesses, they have to come into the Public Works counter, and they get a permit for that, and they pay a fee, and I don't know what that is, but they pay, I believe, a yearly fee to use that area, and that is reviewed to make sure that, that through pedestrian zone is still being maintained.
Okay, so from the door, let's say, you know, from, from the front door of the enterprise, from that point forward, let's say, out to the street, to the curb, it's, what is the, well, I guess two to six feet is the frontage zone?
Mm-hmm.
And they can seek a permit to put their tables and chairs within that zone, as long as it doesn't impinge on the-
Yes, and so, like, I think in State Street, you're gonna probably find, I'm not exactly sure the dimensions, but the dimensions are larger than this, so you, that's why it's a little, the frontage zone where they have is-
Because from there to the curb is, okay. Where it's not one, just a related question, where it's not street frontage, I'm thinking of the new French press location on Lower Anacapacross from Antioch, so their tables and chairs are sort of in the parking lot, I mean, they've taken a part of the parking lot, is that treated differently because that's not the, it's not the typical frontage zone and pedestrian zone?
Yes, that is treated differently. Typically, the way that is reviewed is, they are still required to provide ADA access, so there has to be minimum access for people to get from their cars, from the street to the business, so those have to be maintained, and those are reviewed by the Building and Safety Division of Community Development.
And then obviously, they had to ensure if they were, I don't remember if they removed some parking spaces, but if they were converting, then they would have to still, they obviously have to meet minimum sta, parking requirements if, to in order to provide this-
My recollection of that particular site is, they are overparked just because of the location of the parking lot across the street. I believe they're in an 80% zone of benefit, so they have a lot-
Across the street?
Uh, yeah, Lot 10 is-
Oh, oh, that one, oh, I see, yeah, okay.
I think they're in an 80% zone of benefit, so they have the ability to lose a number of parking spaces if they wish, but typically, businesses will wanna have front-door parking.
They didn't need a special permit of any kind because it's not encroaching into the pedestrian?
On that one, I don't believe they needed a, they needed, you know, a building permit, and I believe there is another, they're asking for another building on their site, but I believe that is going to the Staff Haring Office or not the Planning Commission.
Okay, thanks.
And we, you weren't here, but we're just being really casual and waving or piping right in if you want.
Now that I got it down pat. Guys, for being a few minutes late. Question, on the frontage zone where you have outdoor tables, is the reason for the gate fencing, is that if liquor is served, it's required? I'm, I'm trying to recall, but if liquor's not served, you don't have to have the separation, like wrought iron or tubular?
That's outside of my realm of knowledge, I'm not exactly sure if that's a ABC requirement or-
The, the outdoor dining is actually, there's a separate ordinance, there's a chapter in, in the municipal code that lays out the permitting process, that it also specifies widths that may or may not be consistent with the, the through pedestrian zone. I'm not sure the timing of the, the adoption of the pedestrian master plan and that ordinance, or their coordination, but you will see along State Street, varying widths of outdoor dining areas, and the reason for that is that there has, there is a, a set length, area, or a length between the gate or the fencing around, because each of those, as you notice, is that they are differentiated from the pedestrian walkway by bollards and chain, or, or a low fence, or a low gate, whatever you would like to call it, for obvious practical reasons. But the, so the barrier to the dining area, then that clear space, so there may be a planter there, or maybe not. If there's no planter there, or if there's no bench in that sidewalk, there's more area for that, for that pedestrian way to, to be maintained clear, and so that's why you see varying widths. Some businesses have a, you know, only a few feet, and some have more, and so that, and that's governed by that ordinance.
Oh, if you don't mind, I was just gonna say, I believe that width is eight feet, so you have to have eight feet clear, and so if you don't have a tree, then you can, you can, and it's paved all the way out to the, to the curb, you can use that, you know, so it's different wherever you go.
Mr. Foley, I, I've seen conflict between this diagram and what Public Works requires when you have a driveway that then crosses the sidewalk. Their minimum depth for a dustpan driveway is five and a half feet, which you can't fit within the curb zone and the furnishing zone, 'cause you only have four and a half, then it impinges on the driveway. Are you allowed to neck down the pedestrian through zone where driveways occur?
When you start getting to the details, a lot of these things, it becomes, you know, we have to take these on a case-by-case basis, we need to make sure that we're working with drainage, drainage, we're looking at the ADA requirements. The through pedestrian zone, what you will see, and it has happened before, is at the place where you're crossing a driveway, the minimum requirement at that pinch point, I guess would, would be the ADA minimum requirement, usually at the four feet-
Forty-eight inches, right.
So you need to maintain that. We're trying to get as much as possible, we try to limit the amount of pinch points, there are, they happen all the time. You may have a street tree that, you had that one point, and if you go to a six-foot sidewalk or an eight-foot sidewalk, well, then you have to remove the tree. Well, okay, at that point, we're gonna probably say, the best thing to do at that point is to have the sidewalk wraparound. We have at times, though, asked for dedications onto a proper, property to get those things to happen. That happens a lot on driveways, where you'll, I can't think of any specifically, you'll notice a sidewalk, you'll be straight, and then, in order to get to that dustpan in there, there'll be a little jog that goes behind the, the driveway, so that a person who has, maybe in a wheelchair, still has that 2% cross-slope that they can get around without tipping over into the driveway.
And then the intent of the pedestrian through zone is that it remain reasonably straight, so that people aren't having to meander like an obstacle course?
Correct.
Especially, you know, a blind person trying to go down the sidewalk type idea.
You wanna have that visual, you wanna have that visual feeling as you're walking down the street, that you're able to see the end of the block, as opposed to what happens over here. You, there, you, there is a psychological draw away from wanting to be- You, there, you, there is a psychological draw away from wanting to be walking through a neighborhood if all of a sudden you're walking and you, you can't see where you're going.
Now, you had mentioned also that the frontage zone can actually occur on the adjacent property rather than in the right-of-way. Now, does that have to be a dedication, or does that become an easement? How?
I, we, I will work with engineering to find out which is the best way to, to handle that. Sometimes it's a dedication, sometimes it's an easement. I can't give you a, a straight answer as when it happens one way or the other.
We've had examples that have come before the commission, and I'm thinking the one on South Hope, where they actually did a low-grade garage that encroached under the sidewalk, you know, because there was a dedication involved, but the dedication was from the surface level up. They were allowed to keep their garage underneath the pedestrian sidewalk area.
And I would believe that would, we would consider that as definitely one of the exceptions. Okay.
Great, thanks.
Jim?
Mr. Foley, a couple of questions in regard to the actual review for consistency in that process on the pedestrian master plan. You're obviously very well-read and experienced on it, so thank you. You seem to have a, a good in-depth knowledge. Are, is it your department, or are you specifically the one that does the primary review for consistency on these projects? And on larger projects, is there a role besides on planning commission? Like, for example, do some of the larger projects that, that include pedestrian improvements or requirements for pedestrian improvements or consistency with some of the pedestrian planned features go to the Transportation Committee? Could you talk just a little bit about that?
Typically, when, well, my staff, my, the land development staff of transportation, it consists of myself, Chelsea Swanson, and Stacy Wilson. So the three of us are the ones that are reviewing all the discretionary and ministerial projects that come through, either through the building plan check process or through the discretionary process. There are projects that you don't see that go to the staff hearing officer, they are getting the same sort of review that, and for consistency, that happens here. So those types of things do happen. I will point out, there are some things, for whatever reason, you know, we've got this, I'll point out, for instance, the furnishing zone is four feet. I think when this was developed, that seemed like a good amount, but it turns out, as we're now going through the city, that I'm gonna guess, a majority of what we see, the furnishing zone is three and a half feet. So when that exists, we say, well, that's consistent. We've got four feet from the curb to the through zone. What's really important is that through pedestrian zone. So we're not gonna require an applicant to provide six inches of, of additional landscaping when it's really not providing anything more for the pedestrian or getting any more real, real estate for what we would consider what is needed in the furnishing zone. So, yes, we do look at the consistency on all sorts of things, many of which do not come to here, but the two discretionary bodies that we are seeing typically going for these projects are the staffing hearings officer and the planning commission.
May I follow up?
Okay.
And what about the Transportation Committee? Do they review any of the larger ones that have pedestrian components?
They are not, the Transportation, Circulation Committee are looking more at policy issues. I'm trying to think if there's any, there, I, I believe, for instance, when we did something as large as when they were redoing the Cabrillo boardwalk area, that may have gone to them just as an overview of, this is what is going on. I don't think they really got into the, the weeds as far as, you know, how is this, what's the frontage zone in this area?
One more question.
Please, just, go ahead.
In terms of the public projects that don't necessarily require the typical development review permitting process, are those also subject to the pedestrian master plan and some sort of review for consistency?
Again, going back to the, if there is a trigger for us to ask for those things, so subdivision, discretionary review, or a commercial project that's adding more than 25%, so it's possible it's something that, I'm not sure about the permitting, I'll turn this over to Danny as far as where the, that, that trigger is, but from our perspective, there is the potential that if it crosses that line, but isn't something that's going to the planning commission, then we would be asking for those types of things.
What if it's a capital improvements project, for example?
Capital improvements projects would be handled by the Capital Improvements Group, and they would be, we would be reviewing projects that they would be doing.
Capital projects, city capital projects, there is, they're twofold. One, there is a permitting process for most capital projects, particularly within the right-of-way. The second is that capital projects are informed and design, and their design is shaped by the circulation element and any other applicable element, depending on where you end up within either city property or the city right-of-way. To follow up on the, the answer to your prior questions, the Transportation and Circulation Committee and, and some of the other committees that the city has that don't necessarily meet, the land development process and the quasi-judicial process for private projects has a particular set of decision-making bodies, and their, and their roles are well-defined. Where I would see the role for the Transportation and Circulation Committee within the development process is in, is informing the development of the pedestrian master plan, of the circulation element. Those types of policy documents would gain from the information from the Transportation and Circulation Committee. However, I don't think it would be appropriate to send private projects through that committee because it doesn't have a defined role within the quasi-judicial process. It would be adding on yet another layer of, of review and, and without a, a real definitive or defined process. The, you will see city projects being sent to there, and, and that's really just a matter of, it's, it's more within the prerogative of the city, and then, and you'll see that the city staff themselves, the parties who are tasked with defining these projects, both at, at the behest of the council, but also with the, with the input of these advisory committees. So that's where you'll see some of these other committees getting involved in a project basis, but you'll, you'll find that mostly that's in city capital projects, not in the review of a private project.
Sheila?
Yeah, oh, thanks. Steve, that diagram, excuse me, the diagram indicates, seems to indicate a minimum of 15 feet from curb to the property line. But there are places, I'm thinking of streets like Alameda Padre, Sarah, where in some places there are sidewalks, most places there aren't, there simply isn't room for them. So I, I guess this is another, on a case-by-case basis, where you decide just what will be required.
What I will do is, well, first of all, I'll direct you to page, that 218. If you'll notice, the three pages that are in there talk about, first of all, starting on page 218, is sidewalk zone table for high pedestrian use areas, and then on page 221 is for low pedestrian use areas. And we then look at, and if you look into the application, there are, depending upon how much right-of-way is available, so you have 80-foot right-of-ways in the high areas down to less than 50 feet. So as the right-of-way area decreases, we have less room, so we're trying to put in, the areas get smaller. Five feet is the, is the absolute minimum. That is actually the, the, I believe it's in the construction code says that five feet is the minimum sidewalk area. Typically, whenever you see a project, we're asking for six feet as minimum, but then things will change. There are areas that in the city, say up on, up on the Riviera, where you don't have sidewalks. As part of the pedestrian master plan, we did do a survey and an inventory of missing sidewalk segments. Even though that we know that there are missing segments in some parts of the city, there are just areas that they are so low volume and be so problematic to get sidewalks into these areas, they haven't been identified as an area that is a, quote, "missing sidewalk area" that either a private developer will be responsible, or the city has any intentions of adding it to their capital improvement plan. So you're, in the areas of the, the grid and the Mesa, most areas, you're gonna always be hearing for an application of, of sidewalk to be included as part of that project. There are times where it is not.
Thinking about streets like, say, Los Alturas, or Loma Media, or Abrelato, they're just, it would be impossible.
Right.
There's hardly room enough for the two travel lanes.
Exactly.
For the cars, as it is. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you've ever heard of the Metro Park subdivision, some of these projects, but it used to be that section of Metro, on the south side, between Mesa Lane and most of the way all the way to Woodhouse, and there was a sidewalk. And you may, you may recall that some people said, "We don't own sidewalks, we'd like to work the whole place." But, oh. Forgot. Yeah, but we, but the, the commission followed through with the staff recommendation to put the sidewalks in, and, I mean, I've only ever heard positive things about it ever since. You know, so, so even places like the Mesa, that section of the Mesa where there aren't very many sidewalks, we are looking to, we are looking to, to get those where we can.
That's also, an example of where, whatever the proper phrase would be, of a sidewalk being extended under private property, because you guys just keep doing projects around my house, is right across the street, where the sidewalk, I think, is only two feet wide, and so when the redevelopment was done with the new driveway, they also required a, an auxiliary driveway, or auxiliary sidewalk, if that's a word, on private property, to make the private property and the extent over the driveway four feet wide, and then it goes back onto the sidewalk. So you got that flat version rather than the high steep on the, on the driveway. Steve, when you mentioned triggers, you know, are there, are, at what, at what point, or errors, I'm just making a presumption, but at what point do triggers not begin to reflect a lot of the older infrastructure and neighborhoods in Santa Barbara, where you're not going to meet those triggers, say, for single-family residences, but sidewalks are in terrible shape, or they're not ADA compliant, or they've got, you know, giant curb fall-offs, or that kind of thing? And it, and it's clear they're on, they're small houses on small lots, and you almost, unless you went up, you know, drastically, you just wouldn't meet some of the single-family residence triggers. How do you, how, how do you begin, and, and they're, you know, they're down a capital list somewhere that the city's never gonna get to. So how do you, how do you begin to assess those and, and maybe readdress your triggers or the involvement of the property owner?
Wow. Yeah, I'm not sure how that would take quite a process to get a, to, to change the triggers so that we're putting the onus on private property owners for a deficit that exists. For the most part, it, those are the, of the public realm, so they are the responsibility of, of, of the public, the, the, the city. So those, but you're right, the, we have, as I recall, there's a, there, in categorizing the list of the missing sidewalks, there's a list of 400 projects, and, you know, they can do maybe a couple of them every year. There's no money in the, in the funds to be redoing these sidewalks. Obviously, if something is a danger, those things get pointed out, and you're gonna get a street crew out there, and they're gonna do something to get those things fixed. To bring it up to a standard that we would like to see is gonna take a lot more money and probably something more to the level that needs to go to council to figure out, where are we gonna get more money to do these types of things?
Is there any type of, of trade or transfer process that exists on, you know, when you just, when you have a project that you don't, it's constrained on what else it can give you, but you'd like it to give something else from a community benefit that you can't say, well, a half a mile down there are some street improvements, or do you lose that, that connectivity that you're required to have?
Yeah, I think Mr. Vincent will probably want to talk a little bit about what the nexus is and proportionality and all those types of things.
I think we've had that conversation before. Okay, thank you. Carry on.
I think my next slide says questions, and I think we've been, pretty much been doing that, so...
I have a question. In general, we don't see too many controversial issues come before us about implementing the pedestrian master plan. Usually, when we get a project, the conditions are in there and the conditions of approval. The only time I remember seeing issues from anybody coming forward is when we asked them to widen the front setback to implement the master plan. Do you guys have much behind-the-scenes pushback from people going, that are gonna be coming before us and take, obviously, you're taking care of it before it gets here, but is this something that, you get a lot of pushback, or is this something that's relatively routine to implement?
There's a lot of pushback. It, it, it depends. I mean, a couple, about three years ago, we had a project, 803 North Milpus, that project, I don't know if you remember, the corner of...
On the corner.
Cannon Perdito and Milpus. That was a project where we spent a lot of time with the applicant trying to work something out.
That was one of the ones where we wanted an increase in the setback alongside the sidewalk, right?
There's a lot, a lot of that, but just from, even before it got to your...
Right.
...level, there was...
Typically, unless we're asking for more setback, most of these ones that we see are kind of, I wouldn't say routine, but pretty much routine in the conditions of approval. Is it, other than asking for more setback to implement the master plan, are, are most of those pretty well-accepted by the people coming before you?
Another one, you, the Vaughn site, you probably didn't even think much about that, but that one, we received a dedication on Victoria to get the unnecessary amount of room that we needed for the additional pedestrian improvements in there. So typically, I would imagine if a site is large enough that they can get their project on there, and there's a little bit of dedication that's associated with that, there won't be a lot of pushback. When you start doing it to the point where they lose a unit, or they lose enough square footage that it really starts, they start feeling squeezed, then we start getting pushed back quite a bit. On the 803 North Milpus, as you may also recall, not only was that a push into the property, but there was a slight push into the moving the curb line, which was, as, so far, the only one I know that we have gone that direction. So the pedestrian master, master plan gives us that ability and says, and it actually directs you. You look at the existing public right-of-way and what, what's there to start with, then you go to the property and you start pushing to the property, and if necessary, you can then move into the, the streetway. We then, we really have to work really closely with our traffic engineer on those types of things, but that's only happened once that I know of.
Mr. Chair, so the commission understands, there's kind of a hierarchy of, of authority and the, obviously, the subdivision is very clear. The, the subdivision map act, statutorily says that the city can dictate the design and improvement of a subdivision. So that, and in, and in the typical green acre type of subdivision, you picture, that's the road, that, that, that's the public road going into the subdivision. More, we, what we see more frequently now are subdivisions of existing lots for a condo, you know, a one-lot subdivision to construct condominium units. So what you'll see on those projects is that we, we bring the frontage of that project along the existing public road up to the standards that are identified in the, in the pedestrian master plan. Similarly, the, a lot-line adjustment, it's, it is a more limited requirement or authority than a subdivision, but it's still, it does as well point to consistency, and it's also one of the findings, as you recall, when you are asked to, to approve a lot-line adjustment, one of the findings you have to make is consistency with the general plan and any specific plans. So that's another location where you see the authority playing through down to the, to the circulation element... to the circulation element and through the implementation measure of the pedestrian master plan. The third source of authority is, is 22, 2244. However, 2244 specifically carves out the single-family zones and the duplex zones. That, so that brings us down to the single-family home on the Mesa with wanting to do an addition, not put on a new, a new unit, but wanting to do an addition and requires a coastal development permit, comes to the planning commission, and you're used, you're, you're accustomed to having within your toolbox those authorities that we just talked about for improving that, that frontage consistent with the pedestrian master plan. However, you don't have the ordinance trigger, and you don't have the, the require, the statutory requirements from me, from the subdivision map act. That leaves you with an ad hoc exaction. If you want to condition that project to put in sidewalk frontage, that's an ad hoc exaction, and that brings up the constitutional calculus of nexus and proportionality. The challenge of, of a single-family home adding, say, a bedroom, I mean, the typical things, bedroom or maybe an addition to a living room, kitchen, sometimes we've even seen bathrooms. What is the, what is, is the impact, that the differential impact of, of adding on a few square feet to an existing single-family home? The, we don't require any additional parking typically. They, it's, it's still a single-family home at the beginning of the day and the end of the day, and so the nexus is difficult to identify versus require anybody else on that street. And then the proportionality, as you might imagine, is, is the same issue of how do you get, even if there is that nexus, how do you get to the proportionality where this one property owner, at their individual expense, is being tasked with putting in or, or remediating what is considered to be a historical deficit within the public right-of-way? In other words, the absence of that sidewalk linkage. We see where it is, but the, the challenge between the constitutional standards, and those constitutional standards have also been codified into statute in the mitigation fee act, and both of those limitate, limit our ability in those circumstances, in the absence of a, of an, an existing ordinance of general application, or in the absence of, say, the subdivision map act. When you get down to the ad hoc exaction, it's really difficult to justify the addition, you know, the, the added burden of that sidewalk when it's just an addition to an existing single-family home.
A question on mid-block, mid-blocks, I guess, passages? I'm thinking of Artisan Court, where they improved an access area to the garage with pavers and some parking. Is that considered as a driveway, which is a different standard than, let's say, if somebody took Bond Street and extended it over to the next block in order to get access? And is, does this ever become public as far as requirements for sidewalk or access or circulation?
Yeah, on the private property.
That would be, is this...
It is private. Yeah, so it would just be, those would be a private issue. We would be looking at it for adequate access on a property. Building and Safety would be looking at, is this a accessible path of travel that's necessary, those types of things, but we would not be looking at it from the perspective of the pedestrian master plan, specifically as far as dimensions and those types of things.
Okay, let me see, let me go to Sandman, I guess, if I'm recollecting this. We wanted a view corridor, you know, so there's separation there, and I believe it was also discussed, I don't know, I can't remember if they got, if, what our comment was on that, but access, I think Addison, you mentioned it, access to the, of the block for, for that apartment house to get through. Does that, if you do have circulation with traffic and, you know, both car and foot traffic on private property, does that become a different standard if you're accessing other, other lots?
I believe if, if it's an accessible path of travel, the building code has a requirement that there needs to be either separation or some sort of delineation. Again, this is a little outside of my realm, because we actually have a building and safety staff that review those types of, of access requirements, but I believe that's what it is. Obviously, they'll be working with, with transportation to, we're looking for good circulation through a site to other sites. We're, mentioned those policies, or we want connectivity from one site to another, so those are all things that we're looking for, but the actual implementation of that would be reviewed by the building and safety. I believe there needs to be at least some sort of separation.
Bruce?
Mr. Foley, to bring up the example that you used earlier, the project on Milpus at De La Guera, not Cannon Perdito.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was the former gas station site.
Right.
There was a dedication to incorporate the pedestrian master plan and all the widened improvements along the frontage. It also, I believe, the pedestrian master plan required the curb extension at the corner, which then subjected the project to appeal to city council because it complied with the pedestrian master plan, was forced to put in the curb extension, which then triggered the appeal. Is there anything different now that's been done regarding curb extensions and the dilemma that it puts the developer in when you have to try and comply with the pedestrian master plan?
Yes, in the pedestrian master plan for the Milpus corridor, it identifies a number of intersections that have been problematic. In the pedestrian master plan, it gives us the tools to address some of the issues, one of which are curb extensions. Curb extensions in the relative past have been a little contentious, so at that time, staff, I believe, had asked for a curb extension. You may not hear staff asking for it right now. We may be saying, "There are many tools in the pedestrian master plan. Please consider them and be consistent with the pedestrian master plan."
Great, thanks.
That could change.
Thanks. I want to thank John for bringing this question to my mind. You've been, your PowerPoint presentation references streets, but what about the public paseos? Do these same guidelines apply, or is there a difference between what you're calling a street and some other kind of connections?
Yes, there, actually, the pedestrian master plan does have a paseo section, and it talks about paseos and expanding the paseos and what you want to see in the paseos, but it is a different animal than, than the street improvements that we do.
Okay. We go to the next subject? That was just the warm-up, huh?
That was...
I bet you thought. So if you think of any other questions, I guess I'll just presume we can forward those along to Danny, and Danny will forward those along to Mr. Foley, and we could get some feedback there, too. Thanks for lobbing the easy one first.
Well, we figured out who had the best PowerPoint presentation, and since he had one and we don't have one, his was better.
Eight for Steve.
So the next thing I want to talk about is conditional use permits. This has been a subject of, I don't know, let's just call it angst, especially around Casa Esperanza, because we see Casa Esperanza every couple of years, and we get the same, we get the same complaints from the neighbors, and we get, you know, and it's been twice at least that, that I've been here where we, where we've talked about the limitations of CUPs. And it's been, well, I mean, the planning commission's wanted to talk about them in general for a while, so, so here we are. Now, I don't know if we were already, Julie, did you already pass this out? Okay, so there's a little write-up on CUPs that Scott did for us, and, and that's for you to keep. I'm going to kind of go off that a little bit and first talk about, well, what is a CUP? And to talk about that, I've talked about, a little bit about the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has various zones, right? Land use zone, single-family, multifamily, commercial, various types, industrial, and each of those has a list of allowed uses. We call these uses that are allowed by right. You don't have to ask this, I mean, you know, there's designer view and stuff like that, but you don't have to ask the city about, "Can I have this land use?" No. If it's in, if it's in the list, you can have it. And those uses are categorized by these zones, right? In the single-family zones, you can only have single-family uses in general. There's a few others, you know? And then with, through our pyramid zoning, in the R2 zone, you can have duplexes and single-family residences. In the multifamily, you can have multifamily units, duplexes, and single-family, and then on and on. You know, each commercial zone that's in the pyramid allows more and more uses. And all those uses are allowed by right. Now, some uses, some uses you want to allow, but you don't want to allow them just willy-nilly, right? Like, for example, a church in a single-family zone is an appropriate use, but, you know, if you had a church on every single parcel in a, in a residential zone, that wouldn't be an appropriate use, right? Same with gas stations and things like that. So the conditional use permit is a list of uses that are allowed with special permission from, in this case, the planning commission, right? And in order to approve, in order to approve a conditional use permit, well, there's, depending on which ones we're talking about, there can have, there can be various standards that you have to meet. For example, gas stations have a long list of, of conditions, you know, the conditions of the conditional use permit, right? Driveway widths and, you know, all sorts of things. Another example that has a lo, a long list of requirements is the secondary dwelling unit, which also, which is no longer a conditional use permit. It's a, well, it is, but you can't have a public hearing. It's, sorry, that's not a good one to talk about. But, and others, and others don't have any requirements at all, but, but you do have to make these, in order to approve them, you have to make findings, right? And a finding, and I think I've said this in, in the staff reports for some Casa Esperanza stuff, a finding is a prediction into the future by the decision-making body, right? In order to approve a, a conditional use permit, you have to, you have to make a finding that basically you don't think that this is going to be a problem, right? You don't think there's, it's not going to have a detrimental effect to, or materially detrimental, I think is what it says, to public peace, safe, healthy, health, public peace, health, safety, and welfare. You know, that's one of them. Another one that you think that it's going to look good, right? I mean, that's, it doesn't say that exactly, but it says something like, "The appearance is, is compatible with the neighborhood," that sort of thing. You make these predictions based on, based on the project that's before you, right? We, we look at the plans, we, and we have ABR, HLC look at them to make sure, we think that they look good and they are compatible. You also make that, you make that, you make that call. You also make a call as to whether you think it's going to be detrimental, you know? A recent CUP that we had was for an Alzheimer's facility, 1820 Delavina Street, right? And that requires a CUP in the R3 zone, but it was something that's, it didn't seem controversial to me at the time, you know? An Alzheimer's facility is something that seems like it fits pretty well into the multifamily zone. And so then, so then, based on what you have in front of you, all the information, and we do spend a lot of time as staff asking for information about operations, what, how many employees you're going to have, how many visitors you think you're going to have, let's get a traffic and parking study to see what we think the parking, whether they're going to meet your parking demand. All, you know, so all kinds of operational things come into play with conditional use permits, and then if the commission is satisfied with, with the limitations on operations, then they can approve the plan, they can approve the conditional use permit, making, making those findings. Now, again, you know, one thing, one thing that we've heard a lot during the Casa Esperanza hearings and leading up to them is that, "Hey, you know what? The city, you were wrong. You, you thought that there weren't going to be any detrimental effects, and there are, and that's, so you should rescind this CUP," right? That's probably the only time, only CUP that I can recall where, where, where people have said this. But, but you're not allowed to do that, because the finding, again, it's a prediction into the future based on the information you have, and if you're wrong, that doesn't allow you to, or the city, to take away, take away the, the use. And I'm going to, I'm going to keep going, and Scott, you can, you can interrupt me if I'm going, like, totally off the rails. But, so once you have an approval, so let's say, based on all the information that you have in front of you, the planning commission or the city council on appeal grants the conditional use permit, and then there's a long laundry list of conditions. Those, the, the only way that you could revoke a conditional use permit is if you don't, if the applicant does not meet those conditions, right? And it's not just one time you meet, you don't meet the condition and you're out. It doesn't work like that. You know, the way our enforcement process works is someone reports a, a violation of the conditions to us, we investigate, and if indeed there is such a violation, we, we give the applicant's opportunities to rectify that, that violation. And if they do, then it's all good and life goes on. If they don't, we give them a couple of chances, and eventually, you know, we will find them or we'll, or we'll refer to the city attorney's office for, you know, taking to the, taking them to court to try to, to get them to be in compliance from their conditions. So, but once you, once a project is approved, a CUP is approved, and the applicants have, I don't know if the term exactly, but basically, you spend a bunch of money because of the approval. At that point, you have what's called a vested right. And with your vested, once you have vested right, this, the city is very limited into which, into the ways that you can revoke that conditional use permit, basically what I just told you. You know, if you don't, if you violate your conditions and you won't rectify it, we can, you know, either go to court or, or bring them back to the planning commission or the city council, I can't remember which, for revocation hearing. But it's, 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 it's very, it's very tough. Scott, you want to jump in?
Well, Danny's doing just fine. The, the concept of vested rights, it, it is that once an applicant has made their application, that the application has been approved, and that they expend a meaningful, significant amount of money in reliance upon that application, that, that becomes a vested right, and it entitles them to protection. The, they, that reliance, it's, I mean, in some ways, it's, it's almost like, at a, at a simplistic level, it's a fairness doctrine, saying, "They followed your rules, you said yes, you can't pull the rug out from underneath them later." The challenge, and I, I would recommend that we try to stay away from the Casa Esperanza example, as it, it, it requires, Casa Esperanza or homeless shelters in general require attention, and the, and the, it, it is a good case study on why it is important as you consider allowing new conditional uses. In other words, if, if the planning commission was considering a new zoning ordinance or an amendment to the conditional use chapter of the zoning ordinance, I would, having lived through the Casa Esperanza experience with many of you, that I would be very careful about how I advise the commission and staff in crafting the necessary findings for a conditional use like that going forward. That, that is the place to really focus your attention, because the conditions are what will fulfill, you know, are what allow you to, they create the assurance or, or the ability to fulfill the vision of the findings that you need to make, that the detrimental impacts won't occur. But unfortunately, the findings for the Casa Esperanza conditional use permit don't get at, don't address the most poignant or impactful things about that use, that the people that they serve leave the property, go away from the, the use, because the conditional use is, is the homeless shelter. It's not the people, it's the use. A conditional use permit, a better paradigm for a conditional use permit is what Danny mentioned, a gas station, because the gas station does what it does on its location, within its control. The owner or operator of that gas station is responsible for how it operates. They will have a set of conditions. If they have a car wash, it'll have certain hours of operation... If they have a car wash, it'll have certain hours of operation. If they operate that car wash outside those hours of operation and they don't respond to enforcement efforts short of a, a revocation, the city can revoke a conditional use permit for that reason. And there, and so, the, the, the conditional use permit, as Danny said, I, I haven't seen another call for a revocation of a conditional use permit, because the tool in general works, particularly for uses where the, the external impacts of the use are within clear control of the property owner or the, the party with the entitlement. When you have that connection, then the conditional use permit works pretty well.
Do we have, just from my own education, do we have certain functional uses in the city, like a gas station? Do they all have, I'm, again, I, I'm not, I don't have the most in-depth knowledge of CUPs. Do they all have to have CUPs because of operational issues, regardless of where they're physically located in the city? Or they were anomalies, you know, exceptions to a, a rule in zoning?
Well, it's, I mean, the, the answer that's not complete is yes, they all required to have CUPs, but the requirement for the CUP came into effect long after most of gas stations were in existence, right?
Yes.
So, so those are called non-conforming gas stations. They don't, they don't-
Existing non-conforming.
Correct. They existed before the adoption of the ordinance. They get to continue, uh, existing and operating as they, as they have, but once they want to come in and make changes, then we require them to get a CUP, right? So, so if there's a gas station that, that has been operating the same way since the 50s or the 40s or whatever, and nothing's changed, they, I mean, they, they can do things like change out pumps and, and signs and things like that, but they want to move things around, they put on a new canopy, and they want to make a mini-market or whatever, that sort of thing, then we say, okay, well, you've had the benefit of existing for all this time without a CUP, but now with the changes that you're proposing, now we pull you into our system.
So, do we have functional categories? Okay, functional, I don't know what else to call it, gas stations, things like that?
Yes, the list-
And it's here in our packet?
Yes, the list of uses that are allowed with conditional use permits are the last three pages of the document, or last two pages of the document. And it says, "Uses permitted in specific zones with, with a conditional use permit," and there, there are a ton of them, but it is a limited list, right? Sometimes people come to us and say, "Well, I want to put a factory in the, in the multifamily residential zone, can I get a CUP for that?" You know, and, because I guess maybe in other places, they think that it's kind of this open-ended thing where you can just ask for a conditional use permit, and you can get one with whatever conditions the jurisdiction might want to put on it, I'm not sure. But in our jurisdiction, you can only apply for CUPs that are specifically listed in our ordinance, so that's, that's only the ones that are on this list.
Okay.
I'd like to follow up on what Scott was talking about. The issue with Casa Esperanza has been going on for a long time, and I think the thing that's most difficult for most people in the public and some of the commission to accept is the fact that we can issue and approve a CUP, but we, once it's issued and approved, we can't do a damn thing about it. And, uh, each time, I think I've sat through three of those reviews from Casa Esperanza, and each time, it's the same thing. If we can't do anything about it, why don't we just not have those public reviews? If we have to have a report from Casa Esperanza every two years, why not just get a written report and file it? Because every time we do this, it raises the public's expectation that somehow or another, we're going to do something about the problems, and, and we end up going away and saying, "We can't do anything about the problems because of what Scott said." So, rather than keeping on scratching that wound, I would say, why don't we just eliminate the requirement for a public hearing on the status of the CUP?
The conditions don't require the, the public review, the, the planning commission hearing for, for the update. It just requires that it be submitted. So, that's an, I mean, that's an option.
So, I have a couple of questions for Scott before we move on to the other points on this handout. So, my recollection is, I've repeatedly heard from you when I've asked all my dumb questions on CUPs and why can't and why can't and how come, was that the state won't allow it. But then, part of the handout here makes it, and so, part of my confusion, part of the handout here says, "State, state zoning law is silent on the criteria for evaluating whether it should be granted or not." And then, when you get to some of the other, uh, talking in there, cities have crafted ordinances for CUPs and agreed to those ordinances, and then tried to apply them, and then the state comes back and says, "Well, they can't even apply them like that." So, so where is the state getting this authority to actually either make, make a legal decision or say you can't do something that you've already put into your zoning, zoning law?
The, the state can fully occupy a regulatory field, and it, the, the paramount law of the country is, is the federal law. There are, there are, there are relationships between state law and federal law. The preemption doctrine goes from federal to state to local. The city as a charter city has more autonomy than general law cities within the state. Uh, the, so, general law cities primarily look to state law for their planning rules, their planning standards. They're, they are subject to a wider variety within the, the state planning law found in the government code, 65,000 et sec. And it goes on for several, like, 3,000 or 4,000 statute sections. They're not all filled out, but it goes through those. General law cities have to comply with all of them. Charter cities have to comply with a subset of them, where the stat, where the legislature has specifically applied those statutes to not only general law cities, but also to, to charter law, charter cities. The, for a couple of examples, uh, the, the secondary dwelling unit is, is an example where communities throughout the state were adopting rules. Typically, the, the secondary dwelling unit as a concept, uh, kind of developed over time, and local communities, to varying degrees, had embraced them, hated them, whichever way, and depending on their approach, they adopted their own rules about them. I couldn't tell you who was the, the thrust, you know, what, what political lever was pressed, but ultimately, the state legislature carried a bill that said, essentially, secondary dwelling units, we deem these to be a viable source of additional housing within the state. And we believe it's an economical source of housing, and we disagree with these local communities and their restrictive conditional use requirements or other, whether it's, you know, whether they're conditional use or just simply zoning. So, we are going to interject ourselves fully within the regulation of secondary dwelling units, and we are going to tell local communities the parameters in which they may regulate them. So, there's, there's an example of where many communities had conditional use permit requirements for secondary dwelling units, and in many communities, they were very onerous. And the state decided, this is how we're going to do it. And this is, and they, and they set for, as far as, they made secondary dwelling units in general a matter of right without a public hearing, if, but they had a, a limited subset, they allowed a limited subset of conditions and, and limitations that local governments could, could apply. And so, that's an example of, of where the state can intrude into the, the local community's authority.
So, we're falling into that same kind of kitchen sink when, when we talk about, you know, the conversations we've had on vested rights. In one situation while I've been up here, in the dispensary situation, which weren't CUPs, they were just a zoned use, there was a process you could go through when you changed that zoned use detrimental to those, those particular operations, and you could come up with a, uh, a method to amortize and move those people out of there, at, at a, at a point where you could justify the benefit that they received from their prior zoning approval. So, what prevents a CUP from either having a, a time period or a vesting period that's actually on paper for either a renewal of or review of CUP, and use any, any one of the examples you've used, where you're actually doing a calculation of a dollar value of benefit when you give the CUP over a period of time, and when that period of time has expired, you got, you got what you were given for that period of time, and that's the date your, your renewal or review would come up for the process again. Would that fall into that kitchen sink kind of area again, where legislatively, that wouldn't be viewed, uh, well at the state level, and we'd just lose that battle?
Uh, let me, I'll, it, well, as an example, uh, the, the housing element law within the general plan, the general plan law and the housing element sections of that law, specifically at the state level, have recently been amended to require communities, in order to get a cert, your, your housing element certified, each community must show a zone where emergency shelter housing can be built as a matter of right. And again, the, that ordinance or that statute does allow a certain limited subset of conditions that have to be met, standards, not, it, so don't think of it as a conditional use permit. It's a ministerial permit, but they have to meet the certain standards in order to qualify for the ministerial permit. That, that law is coming into effect, and we're going to have to have that ordinance on the books in order to have our next housing element certified. So, it, I would say that if, if a community was to start zoning out emergency shelters through, and in order to do so, was zoning out existing shelters through an amortization process, given the, the legislature's adoption of, of that statute regarding these as allowed uses, I could see a, a negative response from the-
I don't like that example, so let me give you a better one. Let me get off of Casa. Let's say a church buys a, um, elementary school in a residential neighborhood and applies for a conditional use permit.
You're thinking, "This isn't an easier example?"
I know, well, I'm just trying to get away from Casa.
You're, you're jumping away from Casa into the First Amendment and, and the, and the freedom of expression.
No, but from a conditional use permit, then, the, the process, uh, gets approved, and the church, and you've done your best-case scenario to compare your findings to your predictions in the future, but the vested right the church has been given can act, I would contend, can actually be quantified into a dollar amount over a period of time, whatever that is. So, let's say it's 30 years, okay? And during the course of that 30 years, the church grows exponentially, they, they start holding the event, you know, there are areas within, maybe, maybe you did a poor job up front on the CUP, but, you know, who can, who can say what's going to happen in the future? But the, the, the impact on the neighborhood obviously worsens over a period of time while continuing under, while, while meeting the conditions of their conditional use permit. But can't you quantify the vested benefit you gave that church for a dollar amount over the period of time, and then have a, an end of a CUP and a, and a review for reconsideration? I mean, is that, is that just too simple?
I'm not sure, well, I've never seen that tried, and it, um, now, I've seen the exercise of eminent domain.
Well, the, the reason I bring this up is because I've constantly run into this wall on this, this vested right thing, that, you know, we've, if you go back to the, the situation, we don't want to use an example, is that they, they've gained a vested right, and forever, there, it doesn't matter as long as they're within conditions. And where I would, I would say to you, how did the, how did the conditions at that time equal the vested benefit forever? I mean, that's really the core of my question. Why is it, why is it not more of a math, uh, exercise where the, the vested right equaled something over a dollar amount equal to a period of time? You know, the, the, the investment they had to make, the, the, all that goes along with that, the upgrades they had to make has, has a time period rather than a forever. What prevents that?
Let me jump to another example to maybe extrapolate out how I think that, that process could play out badly.
Okay.
Single-family home development. Project is built, dozens of homes are purchased by single-family homeowners, they occupy those properties for 30-some-odd years. Let's assume that that time is the amortization period, and at the end of their 30 years, this, the city says that this is now a white space again within the city, we're, we're going to make it a new park, and we're not going to pay you anything for it because you've had your chance. You can't, you can't give it to your kids, you can't sell it to somebody else, the house is done, and we now get a park. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I think that it, it's something to explore, but I could see it, it's, I see it not only being legally challenging, I could see it very politically challenging.
You don't see it, I see it with a little focused lens, you see it with a bigger picture on-
Just comparing about-
All types of property and property lines.
I mean, you know, the, as I said, the, the concept of vested rights at, at a, at a very fundamental level is a, a question of fairness and a question of expectations of when you, you get something from, you know, you're, when you have it and you've been told you can have it, why, you know, how, you know, under what conditions can the government take it away?
Okay.
One example in other jurisdictions that shows a quantifiable amortization period and so forth, and is conditional use, often conditional use, is billboards. We don't have that problem here, because we take care of it by saying, "There will be no." But other jurisdictions oftentimes have a conditional use permit, and it's an amortization period that's well-defined.
Um, I, I just have one new question. Do we have a cap on how many conditional use permanent, per, CUPs per category that are laid out here that, that we allow for?
No.
So, it could be-
No, no cap, but-
And, and no floor? So, I'm sorry, I do have to use Casa Esperanza one more time, but it's for this purpose. This is the only CUP we have right in the city for a homeless shelter, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if for some reason they were to move from that property and it runs, that CUP runs with that land-
Correct. So, another homeless shelter that, that followed, that, that complied with the project description and the conditions of approval could move into that space and continue. Same thing with the Alzheimer's care facility, right? If Alzheimer care facility business A, huh?
Rescue mission? I thought they have no-
Maybe, you know, maybe, maybe those do, but they're also in different zones that are more permissive, so I'm, I can't, I don't, I don't remember.
I thought they didn't, but-
I don't remember.
But do we, do we have any policy, kind of a policy rubric that, let's say, the council uses in determining if we are kind of runaway volume of uses in any one of these categories? I, you know, banks, gas stations, we could pick any category that's kind of easier to talk about, but-
It would be up to the planning commission.
So, it's a one-off basis, it's just, is it good for the city and all the other reasons we would consider?
Is it good for this location?
Yeah.
You know, yeah. So, it's-
Why didn't we have CUPs for the medical marijuana dispensaries now that I'm thinking?
Because, well, it was a choice of the, it was a choice of the council, and they chose to do what's essentially-
Was it put to them? Was it, was it offered up to them as a, as a way to-
Yeah.
A way to handle operational uses and, you know?
Well, what it was is a performance standard permit, which is sort of the mini CUP, right?
It's a what, what did you say?
Performance standard permit.
Yes.
Which is 2893 of the municipal code, just before the CUP section.
Kind of a lower level, in a sense, a lower bar.
Right, so it doesn't come to the planning commission, it goes to the staff hearing officer, which of course can be appealed to the planning commission. But it was a choice, because-
And why didn't, why didn't they, remind me, why didn't they go in that direction when there were already, you know, controversies, anticipated controversies around operations and operation and neighborhood impacts and all?
I would say, I mean, I would say there's, from a, from a state and constitutional law level, there is no difference between a- there is no difference between a performance standard permit and a conditional use permit. It's just we, we assigned it a different decision-making level within the quasi-judicial process. But I would say that once you get your performance standard permit and you're operating within the terms of it, you can't have it taken away without a proper amortization period. And we ran into that question and a judge said, our amortization period was not significant enough.
And, and another thing to remember about that is when the first ordinance for medical marijuana dispensaries came through, it was not controversial. It was not controversial. We had no one, maybe one or two people in here at public comment when, when it went forward to the, to the ordinance committee and to the council. It went, I mean, it went through like that. The very first dispensary permit that we had was at 331 North Milpus and there was nobody here.
Do you remember what kind of roughly what year that was, just?
2008, something like that.
Oh, I see.
And so it was only after a few started coming in and, and people, I don't know, became aware of them or something, that it became controversial.
What Scott, what was that?
Well, I went on Mission, raised a really interesting situation because we approved it and gave them vested rights. And after that, the county board of education came in and says, oh, by the way, we have a rental office over here that we're providing education to six developmentally disturbed people. You can't do that because it's within 500 feet. So we ended up giving them vested rights and they moved forward and then we went and took it away from them. So that was an interesting example there.
My recollection of that one was that they hadn't, they hadn't spent a substantial amount of money on, on the property yet. I mean, it was, it was really within the, within the appeal time period, right, as the first 10 days of, of the approval that the school district came in and there hadn't been time to, to vest their rights yet. They had the approval, but it wasn't vested yet.
I think they had leased the property, but they hadn't started doing major modifications to it.
Correct, they hadn't, yeah, they hadn't come in with a building permit or anything.
John?
Yeah, question, so I'm clear. On the list through EE of the uses permitted in specific zones with a conditional use permit, so, so that I'm clear. I just pick a boarding house. A boarding house in R2, R3, and R4 zones requires a conditional use permit, okay?
Yes, that's true.
By which this, now, in the zones, in commercial zones then, is it allowed or not? Is the fact, is it allowed or not allowed in other zones by not having the zones listed as requiring a CUP?
It would depend on the, on the actual zone. So in the single-family zones, clearly they would, in my opinion, clearly they would not be allowed because the zone doesn't allow them and the CUP doesn't allow them. In the commercial zones, I, I, the way that I think about this right now is that it would be allowed because I think they're, I think those types of things are, are, they could be specifically enumerated in, in the zones, I'm not sure. But my, my feeling right now is that, that we would treat them the same way we treat a hotel in hotels that allow, sorry, in zones that allow hotels. And then we would say it's, it's allowed by right.
Okay. So I, so I think I'm clear in that if a CUP is not allowed in these zones, either they're, this item is allowed in another zone or it's not allowed in another zone, depending on what the ordinances are.
Correct.
Could be either. So these are the, I guess, don't worry about the other stuff, this is the only way you've got some latitude.
Yes.
And it's specifically this item for these zones when you're making a call.
There's also, you know, we didn't include the performance standard permit section, but that's a few other things like large family daycare, small, small elderly care facilities, things like that, a few, a few other things, but yeah.
Okay. Two other questions if I can. As far as the auspices of the planning commission, can someone come in and request a CUP on a zone where it's not prohibited? And we make a recommendation to city council for that or are we limited? Because this is under the municipal code, we can't make any modifications for the items?
I'm not sure I understand the exact question, but let me try, let me try.
Let's say somebody wanted to put it in another zone, they had a reason, you know, I want to, even though it's not allowed, I want a CUP because it's so close. We can't make those decisions.
No, we can't make those decisions. Though, I mean, they could apply for a zoning ordinance amendment to add them to the list, but to shy of that, the staff or the planning commission doesn't have the ability to say, oh, well, yeah, you could apply for a CUP for, you know, for something that's not on the list.
The, the listing of the zones in which conditional use permits are allowed and even the, the menu of conditions, those are legislative actions of the, of the city council. And so the planning commission is charged with the implementation of those as a quasi-judicial action, but it's not the role of the planning commission to start coming up with new conditions of approval in order to qualify for a conditional use permit or to expand or contract the zones in which they're, they're to be considered.
Okay, last question on, let's say the overlay densities or new densities that we have coming in. Does, is any of that going to require a CUP in a particular zone that it's allowed or is that allowed now by the general plan?
You're writing it.
In general, most of them will be identified by the, the zone and the general plan designation. So if you have, if you're in a particular zone and you have a particular general plan designation, you'll have a certain density allowance. Then there, there will be another category of priority housing, which is the highest overlay. And that, that requires you have to either develop a particular type of housing or have your housing declared a community benefit or a community priority and then you qualify. So it's, we're going to have, some of them will just be a fairly formalistic process where, take the zone, take the general plan, land use designation, and you come up with your range if you, if you, again, you have to remember, this is an incentive program. The AUD is, is an incentive program. There still will be a base density within those zones that are, that is remaining constant. But if you choose, if you elect, if the developer elects to, to avail themselves of it, then yes, it'll be, they'll fall within a particular density strata and they'll be required to produce within that, that strata and also meet the, the, the square footage size, average unit size that is called out.
So for example, a co-op, the overlay dense, the overlay, a co-op rental or employer housing would have to satisfy the definition and also would have to be conditioned or deed restricted that they couldn't convert to some other use in order to get that overlay approved.
Exactly.
Can I, can I respond to the previous question that, that John had? And that was about the list of uses and, and that. I just wanted to point out that there is one use that allows quite a bit of flexibility. It's, it's W on the list, public or quasi-public facility. That's in any zone, except those are expressly permitted in, in the zone. So that's one that provides us with quite a bit of flexibility to, to get something that's on the list, not on the list, as long as it serves some sort of public or quasi-public purpose. For example, what's it called? It's the, it's sort of that Hyde Garden Court, Garden Court on Delavina Street? That, that was a high-density senior housing facility that wasn't quite a, you know, a residential care facility, but it wasn't apartments either. And we used, we used quasi-public CUP to, to get them into that location. So that, that's one that provides us with a little bit of flexibility if it meets the, if it meets the purpose.
Coming back this way. June, then Bruce, then Deborah.
Thank you. Okay, I think you answered one of my questions, but to confirm, is it the case that all CUPs come to the planning commission except for those similar but named performance standard permits that go to the staff hearing officer? Is that right?
That is correct. All CUPs come to the planning commission, performance standard permits go to the staff hearing officer.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, but back to the timelines again.
Okay.
I understand vesting and investment-backed expectations and I understand the difficulties with revocation of a vested permit. But either I'm not really grasping what you're saying on timelines or I still need, you know, to get this through my head somehow. Because aren't there, isn't there the ability in a conditional use permit to put an expiration and a required renewal period, especially if it's a smaller, almost temporary in nature kind of use, like a construction trailer during a larger building construction process or some other use that really isn't intended, that the applicant doesn't even intend to maintain on a permanent basis?
I have a couple answers to that. First is that within conditional use permit law, there is a case that, where, where a conditional use permit was granted for a limited term, that limited term expired, the jurisdiction attempted to shut down the, the, the conditional use and the conditional use challenged that ability. And ultimately, the court said, no, you can't, they can't just expire automatically. You have to come back and at least have a hearing about it. Now, when, when it comes back and says you at least have to have a hearing about it, does that mean, okay, then you come to the planning commission and it's a pro forma, yep, you're done? And then it, the case doesn't, it doesn't, it didn't play out that way. And so ultimately, I can't, I don't have an answer as to what that court would say if they took, you know, they had not only an automatic expiration, but that automatic expiration goes to the planning commission. The planning commission says, sure enough, you've run your term, you're now, your vested right is now, has now expired. And so I, unfortunately, we're left with an unanswered question there.
Is a renewal process a form of a public hearing that would be allowed? And is the problem that you find is like, what is the basis for granting or denying the renewal? Is it something like that?
You know, I'd have to go back and, and read that case again because quite honestly, I don't, I, off the top of my head, I'm not remembering how the holding gets to those kinds of questions. It, ultimately, the use was allowed to continue. The court said, no, you can't do this. The, the, I understand how that you're, how the commission is considering the, the amortization I guess, you know, the, the challenge is, is that, you know, so many other uses, again, that, you know, whether you want to come back, which, which use do you want to take the example of?
From my, from my perspective, I'm not even considering it, at least what I think of as amortization. But say the applicant only wants something for two years, period, that's all they want, that's all they're requesting.
And that, that comes up to my, the other, you know, I said I had a couple answers. The second answer is, you can always have an agreement with a property owner. The property owner can always voluntarily limit the right that they request and the right that they are granted. You'll hear from me from time to time when you're, when projects are being reviewed and sometimes planning commissioners come up with ideas for new conditions that weren't thought of by staff or, or considered by the applicant. And a commissioner kind of floats a hypothetical balloon. This is typically the way they kind of play out.
A lot.
And, and you'll, the applicant will sometimes say, okay. I'm not going to tackle an applicant and say, guess what? That really probably doesn't follow nexus and proportionality. Don't do it. That's, that's the job for their attorney. Now, there are times when that, that same trial balloon is not received positively from the applicant and is actually challenged by the applicant. And I will advise the commission that I, you know, on, on the issues of nexus and proportionality. But I'm not going to get in between the, the commission and an applicant who's willing to accept a further restriction on their property because they can do that. It's their property, it's their application, they're essentially amending their application to incorporate a good idea from a planning commissioner. And so that's, so you'll see that play out from time to time. And so in the case of, say, a construction project that they, they wanted something for a temporary process, you know, we probably can, you know, there are probably many things that handle that for a period of time, that it, that say, you get this for a period of time. In fact, we have ordinances that have, that allow construction trailers for a period of time and it's, it's a defined limit, so.
Is that an oxymoron that you just issued? A good idea from a planning commissioner?
I don't think so.
And I wanted to add something to that conversation because Scott said he didn't, he had to go back and read the holding. I can tell you that up until about the, I don't know, early 90s, conditional use permits in the city routinely had a time limit on them, three years or whatever. And at a certain point back, back then, we were told that, by our city attorney at the time, that we no longer, we no longer limit it because of, it must have been maybe this case or another case. And that previous CUPs that had, had the time limit, we ignore that and it just runs with the land. So that, that, we've been doing, we've been doing it this way for quite a long time.
Thank you. I have two more questions. One is, Scott, you mentioned that the city council determines which conditions can apply? That confuses me because my understanding of conditional use permit is it's a special kind of permit that fits in a special circumstance, but that most often means you have a framing of conditions that make it all work. And oftentimes, those aren't just standard conditions, those are case-by-case conditions.
Yeah, no, I think I, in that case, I was confusing the terms of the findings that are listed within the, the zoning ordinance and the individual conditions. In other words, you can't come up with new findings and say, well, I, I can't make this finding because I, you know, the sky won't turn blue or the sky won't turn green or something.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that clarification, that helps. Okay, two more questions. I believe it's the case, at least in my understanding, it's the case that if a conditional use permit is approved and it's vested and functioning and the applicant or the owner of that conditional use permit lets it go defunct for more than 12 months, then the conditional use permit evaporates by their choice of non-use basically.
Yeah, that's true. It's, it's in our ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, if, if a CUP is unused for, goes unused for 12 months or more than 12 months, then it automatically expires. You have to keep it going, right? You can transfer to many people, you can sell it and other people can occupy it for as long as they want to, but if for some reason someone just says, I'm not going to do it anymore, I'm not going to sell, I'm not going to sell it to somebody else, I've just abandoned the use.
Or they vacate the building.
Then it's abandoned, yeah.
I went back and I, I have here Daniel Curtin's Land Use, California, Land Use Law in California. And it's, here is, here is their summary or paraphrasing of, of that, that CUP case that I was mentioning, which is the Community Development Commission versus City of Fort Bragg. And the paragraph just says that a CUP or other similar permit does not expire automatically even when a condition to the CUP provides for such expiration or the local code provides for an automatic expiration. For instance, in this case, the court held that a CUP cannot be revoked without notice and hearing despite an automatic expiration condition and that such revocation must be reasonable. Okay? That leaves us with the question of what's reasonable? Is, is a, is reasonableness measured by you have a long enough time, you know, and therefore you've had your opportunity to recoup your investment and therefore you can, the automatic expiration is not a burden upon you? Is it that your, that notice and hearing has to find violations of the conditions of approval and that would be only, that, that only that finding would be the, the finding of reasonableness? I haven't seen another case that has had that other shoe drop yet of where a court has, has kind of weighed those issues of what is a reasonable expiration of, of a conditional use permit?
My last question. Item AA on the list, I don't really understand it. So that's a statement, but really I'm asking what it means.
So, that's a statement, but really, I'm asking what it means.
I don't have the list, what's the, why don't you read it?
It says, "Any interim use deemed appropriate by the planning commission in those areas identified by resolution of the city council as impacted by governmental action." So it's a government displacement issue, right? So if the government comes in and takes away land for the freeway, and suddenly you need some special assistance for an interim period, that's, I believe that's what that's talking about.
Yeah, and these are also excerpts. So there was additional language that explains it a little bit more, but I was trying to keep it brief so you could just see the basics of what's allowed.
I should interpret that as displacement issues? Okay. Thank you.
Bruce?
Thank you. I had a follow-up to the discussion that Mr. Vincent started earlier, when you were bringing up the example of the secondary dwelling units, and that there was restrictions on the limitations imposed by state law. Now, is there anything similar to that, when you talk about then granny units or additional dwelling units? Because I know we've had the discussion here on the three different types, and trying to understand the distinction between them. What about the processing of those three types of dwelling units?
I kind of equate secondary dwelling units and granny units as the same.
Yes, that's true.
Are they? That's part of them?
Yeah. Additional dwelling units are a different animal, because it actually, it's really a fully functional second unit. You have to have enough lot area in order to qualify and so forth. And so that, I would say, that in and of itself distinguishes it from the secondary dwelling unit, because if you have enough lot area, and you're building basically a fully functioning, single-family home, you're not in the, you fall outside the idea of a secondary dwelling unit, and the affordability that the state is hoping for or expecting in that.
So granny unit then really falls under the secondary dwelling unit category?
Yes.
Has state-imposed limitations on the restrictions that you can put in place on that? And then the PSP is just the mini version of approval for the additional dwelling unit, then? Because it complies, based on lot area and all the other criteria, just they're choosing not to do a lot split?
Correct.
To further confuse that, there are also accessory dwelling units that are allowed on our two-zone, between 5,000 and 6,000 square foot lots, and is there another one? Maybe that's the only other one. Yeah, so, sorry, it can be confusing, but we try to provide it with flexibility.
That's why I thought we should at least talk about the terms, because they all sound so similar, and yet they all process differently.
Granny unit, mother-in-law unit, in-law quarters, that's all secondary dwelling units. Additional dwelling unit's different. Accessory dwelling unit's slightly different, although it's the same idea.
Yeah, the granny unit concept was one of the, I think a lot of jurisdictions placed age limits on it, because the paradigm was, well, I'm bringing my in-laws in, or I'm bringing in my parents in to come live with me, and I want to have a detached unit for them to live in. And so it started becoming granny units, and so that was one way that a lot of jurisdictions were distinguishing the secondary dwellings, and kind of beginning to put a box around them, was saying, okay, only people over XYZ can live in these units, and therefore it's okay, because, I don't know why, I mean, it, the, and ultimately, the court said, now, come on, communities, you, this is a residential unit, the people who live in that residential unit function and have impacts on their neighbors as people. The age of them, you know, once you start getting into regulating the age of them, you're starting to intrude into their, the privacy interests, and so they're actually, the granny unit distinction was done away with even before the latest statutory limitations that came out of the legislature.
Is there a reason you can think of that we've had so few legal granny units over the last few years? I mean, I think the examples we've heard is less than 10, but...
Mike? So, God, it was 2003, something like that, the state legislature said, you don't, you can't, the cities can no longer require public hearings for secondary dwelling units. But, but the state also said, we're not, if you have a list of requirements, we're not going to change that. So, we actually haven't moved it out of the CUP section. We still have a list of, I don't know, 20, 20 or so different requirements in order to get a secondary dwelling unit, and they're quite, I mean, it's hard, just physically, to do all these things, right? It has to be connected, it can only be a 10% addition, it has to be a certain number, you know, limited to a certain number of rooms. You have to have two parking spaces for the main unit, and one parking space for the secondary dwelling unit. You have to have separate metering, you know, I mean, it just goes on and on. And, and so I think that's, and then it has to be rented to either a family member or a lower moderate income person, preferably low. There's a special, the default is low income, and then if you can prove something about the economics of it, you could try, you can get a moderate income person in there. So the combination of all these, still, so even though we don't require a public hearing anymore, it's still pretty hard to get one. And most people, honestly, would probably just rather do it illegally. It's faster.
Your law explains the law number, then, doesn't it?
Yeah, but we do, but, but it used to be that the planning, the planning commission would see them, and we hardly would see any. Now, we still see them occasionally, but it's all handled at a staff level. You know, we take care of all these conditions, and the recordation of the affordability covenant and all that stuff, it happens, happens at the staff level. So we still get them, well, there's more, but probably less than 20 still.
Does that apply to new construction, as well as existing, single-family units? In other words, if somebody had a lot they were building a new house on, the requirement against secondary dwelling units would be the same, or for secondary?
They're treated the same, yeah, whether it's new or remodel, or addition.
Yeah. Interesting. I think, I don't know if it's passed yet, but the county is including second units on new construction as an ability to provide your affordable requirement, low, very low, or moderate. That's one of the suggestions. But on new construction, on a way to get, which I guess is the same result, because there's a restriction for that secondary dwelling unit that'd be a certain income, if somebody wanted to build it. But I guess from a positive standpoint, on new construction, you have to provide that somewhere. So rather than a detached, single-family house on its own lot, you can put this along with a primary residence to satisfy the requirement. That's what's being proposed in the county.
If I could ask for a little clarification, do you mean, if someone has a vacant lot and they want to build a house on it, this county requires them to put a secondary dwelling unit on it?
Let's talk about a subdivision to make it easier.
Oh, I see, I see.
Certain number of new units in subdivision, you have a percentage requirement.
Or inclusionary sort of thing, right? Yeah.
So, can we satisfy that?
If within the single-family lot, you provide a secondary unit, that would count as credit towards your entire subdivision.
So, I see.
You don't have to put it on a separate lot.
So if you have an inclusionary requirement, you could be covered with a secondary dwelling unit, essentially?
Yeah, in the county. That's what's being proposed right now. They haven't, it's gone to planning commission and has not made its way through board yet.
I see that as an enforcement nightmare. I mean, it's, I haven't heard everything about it, but I'm envisioning the way that would play out is, you have the owner of the main home, they put their adult son or daughter in the second unit, they set up a pro forma rental agreement at an affordable rate, and it, you know, who knows what happens after that?
May I interject something? I'll try not to do this very much, but the county doesn't have a requirement that second units be affordable to any income level, in general, in general. And they also don't have a requirement that there needs to be a relation between the person that lives in the main house and the person that lives in the second unit. They do require that the main house has to be owner-occupied. So I believe what John is talking about is on major projects that have affordability requirements, you can actually design in those units and count them as your affordable units to a certain extent. I think that's what you're talking about.
Without restricting the income limits, just because it's affordable by design?
In that case, there'd be a contract, like a 30-year contract or something, to maintain affordability, just like an affordable housing project would have.
It'd be, yeah, they'd monitor it just as if they would if it were on its own lot, or in a condominium, and it'd all be monitored.
Okay, well, it's 3 o'clock, and so I guess let's take a gauge on whether you want to keep going, or...
Well, I would say, why don't we finish up with CUPs? In case there's any other questions, or any, have we written anything down that I felt like I needed to do any more research on? But finish up with this, and then we'll end, and then we can schedule, you know, further other meetings to talk about the other parts of things that we didn't get to.
I think after you finish on CUPs, maybe it'd be beneficial if you'd review what was the other items on the list, and then maybe you could ask for some type of feedback on what we thought some priority order would be of interest level on those items to come up first versus last.
You want to do that now?
No.
Oh, I see.
After you finish CUPs.
Yeah, I mean, I'm done with CUPs.
I am too.
We've been answering questions. Any other questions about it, or comments?
If anybody does one of those in the next year, they're just out of here.
I have a question, it's not necessarily related to the...
Wait, wait, we'll keep an open mind and see the application first, right?
Yeah, I will retract to your...
Question isn't about CUPs per se, but it's related to this last couple of questions, and affordability of units, and how do you control that in the future? What about the current situation that we have, where we have deed-restricted units, but that restriction goes out the window when there's foreclosure by lender, and it falls out of the affordable, I mean, that seems like a loophole that is draining a lot of the affordable units that we have in our, in our pool. Is there any way around that, or is that just a given?
I don't think there's a way around it, except for having, one, staying on top of the properties, you know, and the maintenance, so that they don't get into a default situation and become foreclosed. The city, as part of its covenant, has a right of, you know, right of first refusal, so that if it goes into a default condition, the city could step in to keep that unit in the affordable stock. As you might imagine, the challenge there is, if you keep doing that time and time again, you're going to start depleting your, you know, your resources financially to step in and buy these units. As far as, my first comment, as far as a way around it, because we're relying upon private financial institutions to loan on these properties, you're just not going to find a private institution, and it may, and they may not even be able to do it these days, you know, within their FDIC regulations, whether, you know, any of the other federal regulations regarding lending anymore, if they, you know, to have that kind of provision, where they could literally lose their collateral in the case of a default, and be out the loan, and not be able to exercise recourse against the collateral. So I think that, to get private financial institutions to participate in these affordable housing projects, the ownership elements of them, so far, in my understanding, is that they won't touch it, and it may even be literally that they can't touch it if that was not available to them, if the recourse against, in the sense of foreclosure, with, absent the restriction.
So, being able, for the lender, then, to be able to put the unit back on the open market unrestricted, is there a reward for having taken the risk in the first place, then?
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying, in that there could, you know, essentially there's a windfall there. The, I, it'd be interesting to see if we, if there would be a way to create a clawback, you know, where you would clawback whatever value, whatever equity is over and above their loan amount. I mean, that would be one way to at least recoup some of the value of the unit back into the process. I haven't, I haven't been involved in drafting our covenants, and so I don't know, you know, I haven't researched those issues as to whether or not that's even an available tool. But, yeah, as I see, as I see, the, there is, essentially, would be a, inherent in the fact that these are supposedly being loaned no more than a percentage of the affordable value, that there obviously is still equity on the table there someplace, and that really the lender shouldn't necessarily be getting that as a windfall in the case. They let the lender get, you know, be whole, to whatever degree they can, but they may not lend on that kind of situation.
You would think that the lender would be limited to the same benefits that the prior owner gave up, or what they lost in foreclosure, rather than, the lender has an advantage, they don't have to stay in the affordability market, they can go out on the open market. Something just seems out of whack with that. I don't know if there's any way that some of the in-lu funds that other developers have paid, instead of purchasing or building units, could be used to retain units from keeping them from falling out of the system?
And that, and certainly that was one of the allowed uses of the in-lu fees, is, you know, is to facilitate the overall program, whether it be to save units from going into foreclosure or otherwise. That was a stated use when the in-lu fee was created. But, and I think we have, from time to time, used some of those tools. I'm not sure exactly whether we've actually paid out to save units or not, but in general, we try to stay on top of them so that they don't get into the default condition in the first place.
Great, thanks.
I did have one last sort of closing thought on the CUPs, and that is, when we bring them forward, and something that we'll have to think about as staff, and I hope that the planning commission thinks about it as well, not only do we have to look at the findings, but we have to, I mean, at least I would recommend that we make sure that the conditions somehow reflect those findings, right? If we think that, if we think that it's not going to cause a problem, material detriment to public health and welfare, and there's a reason for that, we might want to put that reason as a condition, so that if that's no longer being met, you know, it's, then they're violating the condition, right? And then that's a basis. I think we should at least think about those things as we go, as we go forward. You know, again, we've, I've never even heard of anybody asking for a replication of a CUP for anything other than CASA, so I'm not sure how much thought we have to put into this going forward. But it's something to think about, because it is, you know, I guess, CUPs are forever.
Danny, are potential violations of CUPs handled on a reactive complaint basis?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We don't do any proactive monitoring of CUP? We have so many, apparently. I mean, this list is pretty extensive, it seems.
Well, I mean, that's a whole list of things that are allowed. We don't, we don't have...
I mean, the functional uses.
Yeah, we don't have that, I don't think we have that many of them.
Do you have a sense of just roughly the volume?
No, not really. I would say if we had more than a couple hundred, I'd be surprised. Couple hundred?
A couple hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and, and, okay, so one last thing on CASA, you know, Addison, you had the thing about why have, why have them come at all? And my thought about that is, you know, our experience with CASA is that, and hopefully it's going to be different through this last enforcement case that we had, but our experience with them is, kind of, they come to us, and they go, yeah, yeah, everything's great, you know, and then it kind of goes, eh, it kind of like tails off a little bit, and then when two years comes around, it's like, oh, yeah, we have to come to the planning commission, well, let's, let's get everything back to the way it was supposed to be, you know, and if we don't, if we don't do that, well, maybe now with the new enforcement, the enforcement case that we had set forth some standards that they have to abide by, and they've agreed to do that. But before that, it was, it was pretty wide open, it was kind of like up and down, and up and down. When it came to the commission, or just before, it was, everything was good, but then, but then it would tail off. You know, so, so even though, even though it's a pain in the butt when they, when they come, and it's very difficult and frustrating, some, you know, it has been worthwhile in at least that they kind of get their act together again, you know? So, so there's value to it, or at least there has been.
They could do a written report, and they might be motivated the same to make the report look good.
Or even worse, monthly, in front of the planning commission.
Anyway, just another thought about that.
I had one final question regarding CUPs, and since we can't make changes, but if a CUP holder comes in and requests a change, is that, is our power limited to what item is, that they request to change, or does it open the door? is, that they request to change, or does it open the door for any changes that we want to impose?
My opinion is that you can condition whatever the new thing is, but you can't take away anything that you've already given them. I think that's what I've been told.
Yeah, it's a practical reality, that the applicant is coming in, they have the vested rights of their original conditional use permit, they, I think that the commission could probably propose conditions on whatever extension or alteration to the use that they're proposing. Some of those may or may not affect and morph, and deal with the other parts of it, the, I'd say, the legacy uses, and quite honestly, I think the applicant would have to then decide whether or not they want to accept the amended CUP with those conditions. I know that Mr. Fell and I have disagreed on that. He thought that his gas, you know, his gas station client should be able to get a car wash and not have pump flicks limited in any fashion. And I said, "You're asking for the change. If you don't want the change, then don't take it with the conditions that the planning commission placed on it." I don't know how that would play out ultimately, but that's how that particular one played out. Granted, I think that the pump flicks, the mute button on the pump flicks had very little to do with the new impacts of the car wash, and so that started getting, would, that would be probably a significant point in any further argument over that topic, but if, I could see where the limitations on the car wash and the parking spaces, and if you weren't willing to reduce the number of parking spaces, or grant a modification for parking spaces, or say the gas station was underparked for both its use and the car wash together, and you demanded that they figure out a way to find those extra parking spaces, or you would not approve the amended conditional use permit, I think that's perfectly within the intention of the process.
In that example, I think it could have been argued that the car wash was going to make more noise than the current use, and pump flicks was a way to cut down the total noise from the project, so I think there could have been an argument there, but I think it's been overcome by events. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Okay, well, I guess that's it for CUPs. The list, the other things that I have on this list that I emailed to you was development restrictions, including conservation easements, development envelopes, dedicating land to the city, the various strategies that we've used over time, and what we use today to restrict development rights, especially on steep slopes, that's about the only time we use this, you know, or sensitive habitats, that sort of thing. One thing that I had on the list was green incentives, and I'm not sure what the planning commissioner, who asked me to put that on the list, wanted to talk about exactly, but we only have one, and that is to allow expedited plan check. You know, it's one thing that I find a little bit frustrating, is that we want green buildings, but it doesn't matter if you could, you know, you could propose a lead platinum building, and it doesn't give you anything as far as, that doesn't give you any trading power as far as a modification or anything, you know, so maybe that's something we want to talk about eventually. Mitigation banking?
Danny, I think, excuse me, I think that I had suggested to one staff member, if not you, that we look into best practices of some other municipalities that were like-minded, let's say, you know, similar values, to us, to see what kinds of proactive incentives those agencies or municipalities offered.
Okay, thank you. We'll see what we can do with that. And then mitigation banking, it was just going to be a pretty, I think John Joseph asked for this back in the day, and so we'll do a little bit about that. And then specific plans, so basically, an overview of specific plans from a state level, you know, what the state law allows, which is pretty flexible, and how we've used them in the past. And then a little bit about making motions. ZIRs was on the list, and Mike said, you know, basically, an overview of the ZIR process, zoning information report process for when you sell residential property. Lessons learned about mitigation monitoring, I think, again, that was another John Joseph's request, and I don't, that might take more time. And then, maybe someone asked about Chapala guidelines, and so that's kind of a work in progress.
Chapala Street?
Chapala Street guidelines, yeah.
And where would that, where does that, what's the boundaries of that?
It's on Chapala, from the freeway to Correo.
Correo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what I have on the list for a future, not too distant future, early. I mean, we have a lot of time on the agenda, so...
Do you have a sense on how you'd like to chew that off at the next meeting, or do you want to hear from seven of us?
If you guys have a preference on priority, and we'll get to them all, so I'm not too worried about it, but if you guys want to hear about something sooner, rather than later, let me know. Any preferences?
Any input there?
Do we have any significant items that are coming to us on the horizon that, where it may be beneficial for us to talk through these subjects?
Yeah, well, Hillside House is coming, I mean, I'm not sure when, sometime before summer, I imagine we might be coming to the planning commission, but, I mean, again, there's plenty of time before that. Mostly the other stuff is on the smallish side. So I would just keep going down the list, if that's okay with you guys.
I just have one suggestion, if it makes sense to you, it would make some sense to me, under the Chapala guidelines, it would be good to have the focus on the Chapala guidelines, because that's what was specifically asked for, but if you could spend just five minutes even, or give us a list, so we can see how those guidelines work in context with other area-specific geographic area guidelines, like where else do we have specific ones?
Okay, so just so you know, the Chapala guidelines was primarily for public street improvements, you know, curb extensions and stuff like that, and that was, they were put into place because of all that development that was happening on Chapala Street, right, Chapala One, and Shelton's project, and then the other one that's still unoccupied, I can't remember the name of that one. Oh, that is Chapala One, sorry, it's Paseo Chapala, too, yeah. Anyway, so, and then the rest of, I think what you're talking about are more like design guidelines, Haley-Milpus design guidelines, Outer State Street, that sort of thing. Okay.
If you, June, if you actually just start at the city's homepage and type in "design guidelines", you'll get a page full of them, with links, the links to heck, you know, because every link goes to 12 more links, which is 20 more PDFs, and, you know, but all the design guidelines, including the Chapala One, are on one page, and with a paragraph, and then the link to the actual guideline, it gets a little overwhelming. That's why you want Danny to do it all in five minutes, I understand.
Okay.
Question, I think, on specific plan, in the CM zone where it borders the M1?
Yes.
Per the general plan, the CM zone would allow housing in it. And the CM, the CM line, if you will, is based on parcel, so you have like a sawtooth effect, where a parcel that fronts on Haley Street, right, whoever, yeah, Haley, one that fronts on Haley, no matter what the size of that parcel is, or configuration, since it's got frontage on Haley, it would be part of CM.
Right.
And then, the next parcel, whether, whatever street it's coming in from, whether Gutierrez or a side street, it would not be, it would be part of M1.
Correct.
So if someone were going to develop a mixed use, let's say, would, and they assemble properties, would they come in with some type of specific plan to say, "Well, can I draw the line here?", you know, like a straight line, or is there any provision for that, or does that preclude assemblage because of the irregularity of where the differentiation in zoning is?
Well, we can talk about that, I mean, it's a change, right? Because the line between M1, actually, it hasn't happened yet, but the line between M1 and CM is a straight line, that's measured some distance from the street, and it's like, and, and so there's a whole, there's a bunch of split-zone properties that are, and this happens all over the city, and part of what's happening right now through zoning, a zoning map amendment, is to get rid of as many of those as possible, to get them to be only, every parcel's only one zone, it's not, they don't have a line splitting them in half. So, but your question about assembling parcels, it doesn't preclude that, but if it's right on the line, you might, the easier way is probably just to ask for a rezone, although a specific plan is still a possibility, it's more, it's about the same on a work.
Maybe where I'm confused is not the zoning, but where the density map, is that what's jagged?
Yeah, that's jagged.
That's, I'm sorry, that's what I'm thinking of, the density map is jagged because it just contains a whole parcel.
Correct, and that was done on purpose, I mean, because we don't want to have split zones, or split jurisdictions, whatever, split categories.
Rather than a specific plan, what do you do?
You can do a rezone, or a specific plan could work.
Yeah, true.
Okay, so I'll leave you to prioritize, it looks like.
Yeah, great.
And Allison, would you like to go over the upcoming handouts?
Okay, so the next scheduled meeting is February 7, and we have one item on that meeting, that's 101 State and 16 West Mason, the hotel project.
There's a site visit with that, I says there's story polls.
Actually, that's something that I did want to ask the commission, we did do a site visit, although the applicant wasn't there, if you'll recall, so I don't know if that's something that you'd like to do again, to go out and see the site.
Will there be story polls?
Yes, they have not installed them yet, so...
But they'll be there on that Tuesday?
Yes.
I'd say we'd like to see those, right? Okay, so...
And then the following week, on February 14, we have one item, which is a lotline adjustment on Edgewater Way. And then, the following meeting would be February 21, although we don't currently have any items scheduled for that meeting. And we don't have any other items scheduled beyond that. And for the staff hearing officer upcoming agendas, on February 20, there is, sorry, that's modification, the non-modification on February 20 is on La Vista del Oceano, and that is a lotline adjustment, and those are all the non-modification projects that are scheduled at this time for the staff hearing officer.
Okay, thanks. I think, just for everybody's benefit, too, I just, I would imagine on the 7th, there's going to be a ton of questions concerning what's going on in the adjacent properties to the Roma Santa Hotel property, as a part of the discussion on the Roma Santa Hotel, so I'm sure staff would appreciate not being blindsided by those, and if you can think of the questions in advance, they'll be able to look at the other properties, too, and come back with the information at the hearing, rather than not know the answers. Then, we'll go to committee and liaison reports, do we have a staff hearing officer committee report?
I do have one. The show had two projects at the last meeting, which was yesterday, and both of them were projects that were before the planning commission. One was a few weeks ago, and the other one was a few years ago. The one that was a few weeks ago was the 3031 Samarcand, where they were requesting tandem parking, older house, small lot, and we agreed with that, and there was a lot of struggle at the hearing over the number of windows, and placement of windows, and size of windows that the owners wanted, on where the wall is, they're asking for the modification, for it to be in the setback, but that was continued because of some changes that were made. Then, the other was the project at 1642-1654 Cae Canyon, it's an almost six-acre project, and some of you will remember it, and the owners at that time wanted to divide it into six parcels, and there was going to be a lot of dirt moving, and driveways, and trees removed, and so on, oak trees removed. There's a new owner who is asking for one, the addition of one, asking for a performance standard permit to allow the construction of another single-family house in the open area where there aren't any trees, and they're, and it's more or less, well, it's a lot less steep than the rest of it, so, since it was just under 30% slope, the staff hearing officer was able to make the finding that this would be appropriate, and so she approved that project.
Good. Any other committee reports? Ms. Schwartz, go ahead.
Thank you. Yesterday, I attended the first Parks and Recreation Commission meeting of the year. I'm now their primary liaison, so it was good to meet everyone. And just a couple of highlights, they seem to have very enthusiastically embraced their youth representative, Kate Yee, and there were a number of youth council representatives who came to speak to the commission from the various high schools, not just the public high schools, but also the private high schools in the area, and they seem to be addressing key areas of concern to them, and also to try to create some unity in activities, and some bonding, et cetera, so that took up a bit of time. And then lastly, I wanted to mention, because this was news to me, that through the city's Neighborhood and Outreach Services Group, I believe led by Mark Alvarado now, we have a mobile farmer's market and mobile food pantry to low-income and some homeless individuals on the west side and east side, and so we partner with the Food Bank of Santa Barbara County, and also Marborg and Whole Foods in providing these on a regular basis, and 13,000 individual families typically are served in a year. So, just to give you a sense of what's going on there, and I'm sure Nancy Rapp has all kinds of details if people want more information. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In monitoring the ABR meeting of this week, January 22, the Sandman Project went before ABR for concept review, following our conceptual review that we had recently, last meeting of December, I believe, and it seemed to be favorably received by the ABR, and they also, I think, concurred with a lot of the suggestions that the planning commission had put forth in our concept review, so it's winding its way through, and eventually coming back to us for official planning commission review. The 1130 North Milpus, which is the Santa Barbara Bowl Box Office, received final approval, and that had been before the commission. And then the last project on the agenda, which had received a lot of publicity, was the 911 Chino Street. There was a lot of public outcry, the project did receive project design approval on a 4-3 vote, so that was pretty close. But a lot of movement had been made, but there was still much controversy.
Okay, anybody else? A quick reminder that tonight at 6, at Faulkner Gallery in the downtown library, is the first of two Urban Forest Community Outreach Meetings, so 6 to 8 tonight, and then 10 to noon on Saturday at the Louise Lowry Davis Center, where you can start to see the work that's being done on that project, and learn a little bit more about the importance of both the design and the presence of trees in the community. And with nothing else, we will be adjourned. Oh, and I just want to say thank you to the four of you, too, for letting us drag you in here, for training and time, I know every suggestion is time and money, and I forgot to thank Steve Foley when he left, too, so if you'd pass that along.
I will, and we're happy to do it, you know, this kind of forum, like I said at the lunch meeting, we're happy to do something like this, we just, it's hard to, it's hard to program, you know, a big formal training session, that requires a lot of prep time on our part, so we'll do more of these.
I can tell from the duration of the subject, so that it went over well with everybody, so, thank you again. So, we will be adjourned.